Good evening and welcome. Yes. Good evening, welcome to the Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, January 21st, 2025, Boardroom Meeting, 39 Bank Street, Southeast, Chatham, Virginia, 24531. Ms. McCluster, will you call the robe, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Ingram?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Here. Thank you so much. Would you all join me in a moment of silence? Thank you so much. Let us stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so very kindly. At this time, we will ask for consideration of any items to be added to the agenda. All right. No items be added to the agenda. Would someone give me?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. I believe there was one item to be... Yes.
I was going to make it in one motion.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's see. I'll go ahead and make that motion now. I offer a motion to add to new business, the Clerk of Court's request for funding for the approval of one employee. And this is a contingency fund to cover the salary from February 1st of 2025 to June 30th, 2025.
I'll second the motion.
Hang on one second. I'm going to add to the motion, please. And then from consent agenda, I'm going to make a motion to move to separate items 7F, G, and H for consideration, and those items to be placed on the new business as well. Now, would you second?
Yes, sir. I'll second those motions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there a discussion? No discussion? Time to vote, please. The motion carries 7-0. We move now to the approval of the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus those items deleted.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram, for the motion. Second, Mr. Dudley.
Sir.
Is there any discussion? All right. Cast your vote, gentlemen. Thank you so much. Let's see. Now it's time for presentations, Madam?
We can do the consent agenda.
I'm sorry.
The consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
We didn't approve the agenda. We done the consent agenda?
No, we've done revisions to the agenda. We did approval of the agenda, and now we're going to do consent agenda.
That was the motion minus those items this... We'll do it again.
Yeah, okay. That'd be great, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus those that we pulled from it, sir.
Second.
Is that okay, Matt?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any discussion? We're ready to vote. Thank you so much. Motion carries 7-0. Madam Clerk, presentations.
Mr. Chairman, we do not have any general presentations, but we do have some members of the Averit Board of Trustees.
Hang on, one second. One second, please. May I, before we introduce this wonderful gentleman, may I have the resolution opposing Senate Bill 1190, please?
Did you want that under new business?
I'm just going to read it during presentations at this juncture for the benefit of the public. I think it's important that the public understands that this board, we actually voted on it in the consent agenda. We vehemently oppose Senate Bill 1190, which was sponsored by Creed deeds to take away the actual authority of the local governance to make decisions as far as zoning is concerned, and we do not want to relinquish our power to a state commission, okay? So as Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Resolution 2025-01-04, Virginia, the January 21st, 2025 Business Meeting of Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, the following resolution was presented and adopted, whereas Senate Bill 1190 has been introduced by Senator Creed deeds, which impacts local comprehensive planning, local zoning, and local ordinances related to citing of solar energy and energy storing facilities, and whereas Sid proposed legislation with limited localities abilities to make independent decisions regarding the best interests of the citizens of Pennsylvania County in matters of zoning permitting and local ordinance, and as well as the timing and nature of the consideration process for any proposed solar energy and energy storing facility projects, and whereas Pennsylvania County and its citizens are unique in their needs and circumstances and would be desperately impacted by additional state-level management of or intervention into local planning zoning permitting that does not take into account those unique needs and circumstances. Whereas this board, to the extent possible, desires to protest the interest, protect, rather, the interests of the citizens of Pennsylvania County and autonomy of localities to make determinations regarding comprehensive planning, local zoning, and local ordinances in line with those interests, and whereas this board deems it appropriate to express by resolution this opposition to legislation that is adverse to localities and the rights of the citizens which they serve. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors strongly proes Senate Bill 1190 and measures therein which expressly limit localities' ability to make appropriate local determinations regarding comprehensive planning, local zoning, and local ordinances. Given under my hand this 21st day of January 2025, yours truly, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Chair, Kalen McCluster, Pennsylvania County Clerk, and also Matt W. Evans Esquire, Pennsylvania County Attorney. And we'll be taking a copy down to RIFA this week and also to our Senate. Thank you so much. All right. At this time, we are going to have an introduction of Dr. David Joyce. Ms. Bowman, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Tucker, board members, staff, and audience. My name is Brenda Bowman, and I reside in the Chatham Blairs District. I am here tonight with fellow board member of the Board of Trustees of Averit University, Eddie Herndon of Chatham, for the purpose of introducing to you the new President of Averit University, Dr. David Joyce and his wife Lynn. We held a meet-and-greet dinner tonight earlier at JT's on the Main, and Dr. Joyce and Mrs. Joyce were able to talk with key leaders of Pennsylvania County to include the Town Manager of Chatham, the Mayor of Chatham, the President of Hargrave, Director of Chatham Hall, Superintendent of Pennsylvania County School Division. In addition, we have with us tonight the interim CFO of Averit, Deb Hall, and Cassie Jones, Marketing and Communication. So I would like for them all to just stand so you can see them. Thank you. We say goodbye to our friend, Dr. Tiffany Franks, who has retired after almost 17 years of service to Averit and our community. She and husband Joe will be missed, and we wish them nothing but all the much deserved rest and happiness as they embark on their new journey. We are excited to have Dr. David Joyce, and he has been on the job for a whole two weeks. Dr. Joyce has a distinguished career as the president of three colleges, having retired in 2022 as president of Brevard College. Dr. Joyce and wife Lynn have fallen in love with the Danville, Pennsylvania County area, so I ask that you please welcome them as Dr. Joyce tells you more about himself and will provide remarks about his role here and his vision for the future of Averit.
Let me thank the board. Allow us to have a few minutes to say.
Welcome.
And thank you for welcoming us. It's going to be quite interesting because we left Transylvania County and now we're part of Pennsylvania County. And I give you greetings and I give you thanks for the opportunity. I will tell you that this has been a great move for us. We are very pleased and humbled by the way we have been welcomed. We know Tiffany Franks quite well. Lynn actually had done some work for her many years ago, and she's left us in a position that we can help take and move the university forward. I will also tell you, I blew it, as you knew that I retired three years ago, and we had a great period of retirement. We actually just got back from three months in the Canadian Maritime provinces in our camper that goes off-grid. We came back, and two days later, Helene came and left four trees on our house. So, we're here, we don't want any hurricanes, and we know what, no trees in our yard. But in all seriousness, we are honored, both Lynn and I, because we've been partners in this journey for 40 years come March, and it means a lot to me that we can be welcomed with such open arms. I will also tell you, as you might well know, that there's challenges for all private nonprofit universities and colleges. The first three that I was, they were all seriously stressed, and we're fortunate with good luck and good people and good leadership. We were able to turn... I say we because this is a partnership with my wife and myself. All three have turned around to be thriving institutions. Averit is also stressed right now, and it's caused because of all the other winds that are blowing in our times today. I brought my CFO from my last college, Brevard, but she's working on her own now, and she's been CFO of a couple of other schools, but I know that she knows what she's talking about, she can get to the bottom of things, and I feel confident and comfortable that she will help us also find the pathway forward. I would hope that this body and other bodies like yours would continue to be supportive of us. It seems like everybody I bump into has a connection to Averit, most of them graduates, and it's my job and my duty and my hope that we can help the institution improve and get on a plane that will not be something that would ever come back or hurt us again. Somebody, I was asked by the reporter, who said, you know, "Why did you come? You know, why'd you come out of retirement?" It wasn't the trees on the house, and it wasn't the hurricane in the mountains. It was more about my entire career has been in private, you know, nonprofit institutions, both where I attended school and both where I've worked, and as well as where I worked. And we're losing more and more of these schools, which is an abomination to me. Now, I understand that you're a minister, sir.
Yes, sir.
I am too, so I'll say an abomination to God that we would let this happen to us. So, I came out of retirement because I wanted to have some influence on turning around the trend that's happening to us in our country. So, that doesn't make me any kind of different person, it just makes me thinking forward and thinking as a way how I can continue to help lead folks to a private higher education that will help them serve them for the rest of their lives. Finally, what I would say, one of the things that I really feel about Averit University, why I said yes, was because I think it's located in a perfect area. It's the only school that offers graduation and bachelor degrees in the immediate region. It is the only school that has an aviation program like they have, which means a lot to all of us in this county and in the city of Danville. It is the only school that is right now stressed and needs to be cultured and cultivated by the residents of our area, and I'm here to help make that happen. I hope we're successful, and I'm counting on folks to be patient with us, but to also be friends of ours. And with that, I hope to be back here someday to say, "We made it happen." And thank you for your time and your...
Thank you so much, Dr. Joyce. Let me say to you, Dr. Joyce, that we're excited to have you be a part of our community. We look forward to collaborating with you. I always enjoy a man of the cloth, and it looks like you are well-prepared, and I just hope that we can be a resource to you. So, we have warm regards to you, your family, and also your team, and we're excited about you turning these challenges Averit is facing into opportunities just for a guy like you to be successful. So, thank you and welcome. This time, we move to the hearing of the citizens. Each person addressing the board under hearing of the citizens shall be a resident landowner of the county, a registered agent of such land, resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name, district, in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chair, shall limit his/her remarks to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during the hearing of the citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that is signed up to speak during the said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit should be given speaking priority to at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who is not signed up. Madam Clerk, who's our first speaker?
All right. Brenda Bowman.
Ms. Bowman, welcome again.
Good evening again. Brenda Bowman, Chatham Blairs District. I'm here representing the Beautification Committee. The committee has hit the ground running in this new year. The spring semi-annual countywide cleanup has been scheduled for Saturday, April the 26th, and more details will follow. We began a new campaign to educate students about the importance of keeping our community clean. We have purchased books about littering, and the Beautification Committee members have begun reading to elementary school students leading up to the spring cleanup. In addition to reading, students color a poster showing trash being thrown out of cars and are given a bag for trash to be placed in their parents' cars. The books purchased will ultimately be donated to the elementary school libraries. Supervisors, you are encouraged to read to a class, and if you're willing, please contact your representative on the committee. We would love to see your faces in one of the classes at the schools. We are looking into purchasing trash can costumes, such as Oscar the Grouch, with plans to recruit our supervisors, school board members, principals, teachers, and other elected officials that are considered celebrities in our county, and kids love to see that kind of thing, especially see a familiar face. So, we're going to ask if you're interested in helping us with this. You would walk down the vehicle pickup lines at the elementary schools in the afternoon, handing out trash bags and greeting the students. Kids love costumes and mascots, and especially seeing faces of local celebrities looking silly. We also are exploring several grants in order to purchase trail cameras to rotate throughout the districts with the hopes of capturing license plates of perpetrators, which will serve as proof of violation and turned over to law enforcement. There currently is a state code that makes it a misdemeanor if convicted of a litter violation and is punishable by confinement in jail for not more than 12 months and a fine of not less than $500 or more than $2,500, either or both, or 10 community service hours of litter abatement activities. And I suspect those people don't know that this fine exists, and of course, it boils down to catching them and enforcing, but I'd like for y'all to know that so you can tell your constituents. There also is a code that provides for the adoption of a local ordinance to issue summonings for violations of litter control. The committee will be asking your legislative committee to draft and present such an ordinance to you in the near future. As you can see, we are getting very serious. Although we had a countywide cleanup this past fall, the county again looks awful. It is an embarrassment, and we must take any and all measures to continue our efforts and to show travelers throughout our county that we do mean business and take pride in the appearance of our beautiful county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman.
Kathy Ramsey?
Kathy Ramsey.
Good evening, welcome, Ms. Ramsey.
Good evening. To the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, my name is Kathy B. Ramsey, Banister District. The citizens of the Shaco community met at the Shaco Missionary Baptist Church, 857 Java Road, Java, Virginia, 24565, on January 16th. The purpose of the meeting was to have a conversation as well as to update on the future changes and challenges that will be coming to the Shaco-Java area in the Banister District. Items that were discussed during that meeting were as follows: solar project pros and cons, tax benefits, where would these dollars go, future health challenges of both humans and wildlife, property value, how would it affect us, environmental long-term conditions, solar panels after their lifespan, and landscaping, traffic concerns. The installation of the panels is supported by a concrete and galvanized metal that can leach into the ground. If large amounts of zinc leach in the soil, there is no known way to get it out. If the excessive zinc reaches the water table or impinge on the soil, what are the medical consequences of humans and animal was the question. There were citizens in the community that felt that their voice concerns in the solar farm would not have any influence and the project could not be stopped. The landowners affected by the project or aware of the Board of Supervisors have the final say if the project will or not be put into fruition. Therefore, the Shaco community would like the board to know that the landowners next to the solar panel project are against the project and asking the board to both know when it comes through the solar farms to be developed in the Shaco community. And just to add, there are certain things that the Shaco community have asked the board for that we feel that's very important. We would like to have a convenience store, which you've heard us say before, as well as we have traffic issues at the crossroads at 640 and 857, and the community below Brolingay store with the speed, and we will be addressing that some other time. But, the community, we know we need economic development.
Thirty seconds remaining.
But it would be nice if before economic development come, then maybe a survey would be done to make sure if that is proper, if the community wants it, since we are being served by a board, and we'd like to have more input on it before it even actually takes place. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Michelle Motley Wilson, and I'm a landowner in the Banister District. And I think I sent letters to everyone over the weekend. I hope you got them, my emails were a little choppy, but I just want to come forward and just mention that I also attended this meeting the other night. There are approximately eighty to eighty-five homes in this area that will be directly impacted by this solar farm, be it right in their front yards or right in their backyards. It really will be very detrimental to this community. I can only imagine it is going to completely decrease their property value, and for a lot of these people, it might be all that they have is their homes and their land. So, I would hate to see anything along those lines ruin this community. I also learned that we probably are not getting the tax revenue off of these solar farms that maybe we were promised. So, that's something that I just don't see us moving forward with this, as far as an extension. I'm understanding there are delays in this because of the cost of energy per megawatt and that the cost has increased eightfold since 2020, when this project came into fruition. So, I don't know if this is something that's even going to be effective down the road. The cost was, I think, $24 per megawatt, now it's about $253 per megawatt. So, it doesn't sound like a really viable project. Hanwha Energy, I have researched that a little bit, doesn't sound like a very outstanding company. I think it was a former South Korean explosives company that's gone into energy. I believe that their chairman has been served prison time for embezzlement and breach of trust. It's not somebody I feel like we need to be doing business with, with Pennsylvania County. And again, I think the landowners might be the only people coming out ahead in this, certainly not the community, certainly not the eighty-five homes that are surrounding this project. So, I just hope that in the future, when it comes to voting for the extension for this project, that you guys would really seriously consider this and deny the extension of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Motley. Who's our next speaker? Good evening, welcome, Ms. Lanier.
Good evening, everyone, Board of Supervisors. My name is Adella Barley Lanier. I live at 632 Java Road in Shaco Community Banister District, where Robert Tucker is the supervisor, and I too also attended the meeting at Shaco. I am against placing the solar panels so close to our properties. I'm concerned that these solar panels would bring down the property value of the homes, and I feel that there's other places where those panels should be located. I also feel that when it was decided to place the panels in this community, no one considered how the small landowners would be affected. When we walk out our back door and/or want to have a cookout or have a family gathering, solar panels are not what we want to see. They look terrible and would not benefit us. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Banister District. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. To the chairman of the Board of Supervisors and the members, and they have assembled here, I'm here, I can piggyback on what has been said before about these solar farms and panels. I recently heard that this was coming in my backyard or front yard, and I just don't see, when I came back here, I retired and worked for forty years in the government, came here to enjoy looking at green grass and trees. So, when I get up each morning, I don't want to have to look at these shiny panels in front of my house. And not only that, if I were to sell my property, I don't know whether people would want to buy my home, because they're looking at this in front of my house. So, this would not be an incentive to say, hey, I want to buy this house, because it looks good. But when you have all of this in front of your house, the back, the side of your house, I do not like that. And what is the advantage for me and my children and their children? So, right now, I just hope you all would vote no for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors.
Good evening, welcome.
My name is Patricia Bistro Jones, and I am a resident of the Banister District. I too attended the meeting that was held last week, and I was thankful to my God that there was a meeting. And I wanted to stand before you all to let you know that progress is great, but devastation is not. I am a retired registered nurse, and I do believe in health, and I believe also in education. And our area is beautiful. I live approximately nine-tenths of a mile from the intersection of 640 and 57. And if you've been through there, as I know Mr. Tucker has, it's very, and I'm not addressing him, just singled him out, it's very populated. My residence, my home, if you will go one and a half to two miles down the road in the front, and then you can go to the left, and it can make a complete circle, not a highway. However, there are approximately forty to forty-five residents. We are all taxpayers. I've worked in the state of Virginia, and I've lived in Pennsylvania County all my life, but I've lived there in my home for forty-eight years, and I'm proud of it, I love where it's at, and I love my neighbors, and I don't wish any hurt or harm to go to their health. And as you can see, I don't walk like I used to. I used to run, but I can't run from solar panels, and I know that's not even an option. But I pray that you all will consider denying this for the mere fact it's not going to benefit the area. And we just pray that you all will consider another area where it's not so populated. And that's what I'm asking. Please, let us live happy ever after. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
That's it? Just want to say thank you to all of the residents that came out to speak in the Hearing of the Citizens. We'll now move to public hearings. Pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of Pennsylvania County's zoning ordinance, the Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accordance with this important task, the Board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The Board must ensure that all of the decisions and regulations have been directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Ms. Ragsdale, case R-24-032.
Case R-24-032, Russell and Betsy East have petitioned to rezone two parcels located on State Road 701, Slatesville Road, in the Banister Election District. Of these two parcels, one acre will be rezoned from B2 Business District General to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District, and 0.371 of an acre from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow the properties to be consolidated with adjacent parcels zoned R1 and A1. Once the property is rezoned to R1, all uses listed under Section 35-222 are permitted, and once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. On December 3rd, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended by a six-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summaries and closes the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Rusty East is not here to represent the petition, but I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
At 7:38, I open the public hearing on case R-24032. Any questions for Ms. Ragsdale? Hearing no questions, I close the public hearing at 7:39. That is in my district. I've asked Mr. Dudley to give me his pleasure.
Yes, sir. Is that all you need? Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. In case R-24-032, make a motion approving the rezoning of 1.0 acres from B2 Business District General to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District and 0.0371 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agriculture District to allow the property lines to be adjusted. Mr. Chairman, that is my motion.
Second. Thank you for the second. That's Mr. Heidab Lee. And Mr. Dudley for the motion. Is there any discussion? Gentlemen, cast your vote. Thank you so much. The motion passed seven-zero. Mr. East, your property has been rezoned. In case R-24-034, Ms. Ragsdale, please.
Case R-24-034, Patricia Byrd has petitioned to rezone 22.20 acres located on State Road 801 Drybridge Road in the Callens Gradin Election District from M1 Industrial District Light Industry to A1 Agriculture District to allow for a single-family dwelling to be constructed on the property. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. On December 3rd, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended by a six-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summaries and closes the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Patricia Byrd is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, ma'am. In case R-24-034, public hearing is open at 7:41. Ms. Byrd, is she here? Would you have anything to add?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you for being here to represent your petition. All right, Mr. Dalton, let's see, I closed the public hearing at 7:41 as well. Mr. Dalton, what's your pleasure?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, in case R-24-034, I make a motion approving the rezoning of 22.20 acres from M1 Industrial District Light Industry to A1 Agriculture District to allow a single-family dwelling to be constructed on this property. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Thank you for the second there, Mr. Ingram. Motion second to rezone this property. Any discussion? Hearing not, we're ready to vote. Thank you so much. Seven-zero, motion passed. Ms. Byrd, your property has been rezoned. In case R-24035, Ms. Ragsdale, please.
Case R-24-035, Blair's Country Community LLC has petitioned to rezone .789 acres located on State Road 946 George's Lane in the Chatham Blairs Election District from MHP Residential Manufactured Housing Park District to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to allow for a single-family dwelling on the property. Once the property is rezoned to R1, all uses listed under Section 35-222 are permitted. On December 3rd, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended by a six-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summaries and closes the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. DeMoro is not able to be here. He's from the northern part of the country and they got some weather, so he was not able to make a trip down here, but I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you so much. In case R-24035, I now open public hearing on case Blair's Country Community LLC. Any questions? Any questions? Hearing no questions?
Oh, I was just asking, no one signed up? I'm sorry.
That being the case, I close the public hearing at 7:44. Mr. Bowman, what's your pleasure?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In case R-24-035, I make a motion approving the rezoning of .789 acres from MHP Manufactured Housing Park District to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to allow for a single-family dwelling on the property.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, Mr. Bowman, second. Mr. Dudley, any discussion? Cast your votes, gentlemen. Seven-oh, the property has been rezoned. Thank you so much. Let's see, in case R-24-036, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-24-036, Sandra Warsham has petitioned to rezone 0.1137 acres located on State zero-point-one-one-three-seven acres located on State Road 638 Lorik Mill Road in the Stanton River Election District from A one Agriculture District to R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zoned R one. Once the property is rezoned to R one, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash two-two-two are permitted. On December third, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended by a six-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Staff summary is closing the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Sandra Warsham is here to represent the petition.
Thank you so much, ma'am. In case R dash twenty-four dash zero-three-six. I, at seven-forty-five, open public hearing. Ms. Warsham, is there, are you here? Anything you'd like to add? Nothing you'd like to add? All right. Thank you for being here. At seven-forty, we'll call it six, I close the public hearing. Mr. Dudley, what's your pleasure?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. These are some neighbors just live up the road from us. And they're good neighbors. They don't get in our business. We don't get in theirs. You don't have to build a fence with these folks. They stated themselves. They're really, really good folks. I know both of them. So, Mr. Chairman, my motion in case R dash twenty-four dash zero-three-six, I make a motion approving the rezoning of zero-point-one-one-three-seven acres from A one Agriculture District to R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to allow property lines to be adjusted. Mr. Chairman, that is my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley.
Second.
Thank you for the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Motion passes seven-zero. Ms. Warsham, your property's been rezoned. Thank you again. Now we move to item ten B, other public hearings. Each person addressed in the board under public hearings shall step up, give his or her name and district and/or his or her place of residency for non-county citizens in an audible tone of voice for the record. And unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for groups shall be limited to ten minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time unless the consent of the board is affirmatively given to extend the allotted time. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. And moving to the first one, public hearing, zoning ordinance mass revision. Ms. Ragsdale, what's your go? Ms. Ragsdale, anything to add before we?
No, this was heard by the, the Planning Commission previously in November. It came before you all in December, and then it was postponed until this month. So staff has made the corrected changes. The appropriate version was advertised appropriately and has been on the county's website. And we have also had meetings with some of the campground community just to, to hear concerns and see what changes could be made to address those concerns.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Ragsdale?
I don't have any.
Hearing none? Thank you so much, Ms. Ragsdale. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, based on some things that came to our attention during the work session and our closed meeting, I'm going to make a motion here, and I appreciate all the work that the Planning Commission has put into this. But I'm going to make a motion to postpone the agenda item ten dot B dot one, which is the public hearing and approve for zoning ordinance mass revision to be heard August the nineteenth of 2025.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bowman has moved that we postpone until end of August, the mass rezoning approval, seconded by Mr. Ingram. Any discussion on the motion?
I would say, Mr. Chairman, August nineteenth is our board meeting for August.
Is that your motion, the nineteenth?
Yes, the nineteenth. That's what I said, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Just to clarify.
All right. So say if the motion, any other discussion? Thank you so much. Motion passes seven-zero.
Mr. Chairman, just a brief point of order as it relates to, there have been people that have signed up tonight. It is, it is because the public hearing has been postponed, it is the chairman's pleasure whether they want to still allow them to speak here today.
Oh, absolutely. Has anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir.
Well, we'll apologize. Who's our first speaker?
Jeff Love.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm representing the Pennsylvania County Campgrounds, and several of the owners are here with me tonight. First, I appreciate the delay, so that kind of changes things a little bit. But I, I think we do need to make you aware of some things so that between now and August, you have time to make some effective decisions. So first, I do appreciate everyone-
Mr. Love, I apologize. I just want to clarify, are you speaking on behalf of a group?
Yes.
Thank you.
First, I appreciate everyone that has taken the time to meet with me or have phone conversations regarding the concerns of county campground owners. Zoning is a method that the county uses to control what property owners can and cannot do with their property. The intent of zoning is to balance the rights of individuals with the needs of the community. Campground owner concerns relate to how the proposed zoning dictates how we run our businesses. Although we appreciate that the zoning language has improved, there are still items that need to be removed or changed in Section seven dash four dash two. Item D one, remove administrator access to confidential customer information. Item D two, remove or change length of stay restrictions. Item I, remove or change site size standards, which are excessively large for small RVs, tents, or cabins. Item J four, remove or reduce the restriction of what we can sell in our camp stores. Under the proposal, I can't sell the promotional hat that I'm wearing that represents my campground right now. Item J seven, remove that parking of RVs is strictly prohibited. As currently written, RVs must remain in constant motion while in the campground. So you have to look at that language in J seven. It doesn't pertain to storage, but if you read the language as written, campers cannot park in a campground. Item L three, remove that the campground owner is personally responsible for collecting and transporting trash weekly. Allow employees or hauling companies to provide trash service. Although the nonconforming section in Article nine will help to protect existing campgrounds, it will not benefit the county campgrounds that are still developing or expanding. Those campgrounds will experience significant negative impacts if the proposal is approved. County staff provided some PowerPoints that were presented to the Board of Supervisors by the Berkeley Group from October 2022 to January 2024. The presentations do not properly compare existing zoning to the proposed zoning. I spent many, many hours reviewing all those PowerPoints. As such, it's still difficult for anyone to know what is changing and what is not changing. I challenge any board member to go through the 250-page zoning proposal and provide us with a detailed side-by-side comparison during tonight's meeting. If you cannot do that, then you need to vote no until you can do that. Berkeley Group presentations were as follows. October eighteenth, 2022, public outreach and stakeholder meetings. Per the Berkeley Group, only 208 community members and nine stakeholders were involved. The 2020 census indicates a county population of 60,501. The percentage of county population that was represented was only point-three-four percent. Less than half of a percent of the county was represented. The census.gov website indicates 858 county employers as of 2022. Therefore, only one percent of county businesses were represented during these meetings. No campground owners were invited to participate. Therefore, it's clear that county residents and businesses were not properly represented due to the lack of proper advertising and promotion by the Berkeley Group and by the county. December 2022 meeting, Article nine, nonconformities. This section is somewhat vague and doesn't clearly and thoroughly protect properties that were approved before zoning changes. So that language needs to be cleaned up and clarified. February ninth, 2023, Article four, district standards. This was the only presentation that attempted to compare existing and proposed zoning, although specific current zoning language was not properly referenced. Your meeting on April twelfth, 2023, use matrix, it appears to focus on agricultural and business uses of property, although the changes were very vague and did not include any specific references to existing language. June eighth, 2023, use performance standards, regulates how property owners can use their property. There were no references to existing zoning language during that presentation. August tenth, 2023, community design standards, regulates lighting, landscaping, walls, fences, parking, signs, open space. No references to existing language. October eleventh, 2023, draft ordinance review was just a basic overview of the draft proposal. January twenty-third, 2024, this was the final review work session. That session seemed to address some of the concerns brought forward during the community open house on December fourteenth, 2023. Every campground owner was present at that meeting. Unfortunately, no board members were present at the open house, and therefore, no board members took advantage of this valuable opportunity to hear the concerns of property owners. The only representatives were those from the Berkeley Group at that open house. It appears that no zoning proposal work was done by the Berkeley Group after the January twenty-third, 2024 meeting, other than providing the updated draft on January first, 2025. So that shows about a year with no progress. 2024 would have been an excellent opportunity for the board to properly obtain community input and complete a thorough comparison of existing zoning with the proposal. So I'm not sure what happened in 2024, but it's, it kind of dropped off the radar for almost a whole year. During the different presentations, it was clear that the Berkeley Group was dependent on their prefabricated template to overhaul county zoning. As a result, they were unable to or unwilling to take the time needed to properly make these massive changes. The county also needs to attain a much larger percentage of community input before implementing something that will impact every county property owner. We trust that the board will continue to vote no on the zoning proposal until a proper comparison and review can be made between existing zoning and the proposal. Item four of the board code of ethics includes a statement, meaningful involvement of the public. Less than a half a percent of the county population is not meaningful public involvement, especially regarding something as impactful as zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Has anyone else signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. Tracy Love.
Good evening. Welcome, Ms. Love.
Good evening, and I'm Tracy Love from the Stanton River District. First of all, thank you very, very much for all of the changes that have already been made to this zoning from the Berkeley Group. Going pages and pages of campground, zoning ordinances down to two pages, we're definitely moving in the right direction. And honestly, things that I was going to say kind of went out the window when I heard you delay until August. I thank you very much for making that delay, and I am looking forward to seeing more changes and more drafts of the zoning to see us all move in the right direction for the county. One thing, a little off topic, but still related to the zoning, we've been coming to a lot of these meetings since all the zoning has come into play. And by doing that, I have learned an awful lot about the people of our county. And we have a lot of people who care deeply about this county and that want the best for the people of our county and our natural resources. And I'm hoping that this, the changes in the zoning will reflect what our, our people need and what we need to do to protect our resources and keep our businesses going. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Love.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
That's it? Thank you so much. This time, we will move to the sale of the Old Climax Store acceptance. Mr. Evans.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At its business meeting held on October fifteenth, 2024, the board authorized county staff to advertise the publicly owned property known as the Old Climax Store site located in the Callens-Gretner Magisterial District containing point-six-one acre at the intersection of Route 799 and Route 705, also designated as tax parcel number one-nine, uh, 1499-dash-94-dash-1236 for sale to the public. County staff advertised in the Chatham Star Tribune on November sixth, 2024, and the property, that the property would be auctioned on govdeals.com for seven days beginning November twelfth, 2024. Copy of said advertisement is attached in the packet. The county received eighty-six bids, with the highest bid being eight thousand three hundred dollars. Fair market value of the property is assessed at fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars. In order to convey the property, the board must authorize the acceptance of the final bid amount and designate the interim county administrator to convey the property by his signature on all closing documents, including the deed for the board's review and consideration related supporting documents are attached in the packet. County staff recommends that the board hold a public hearing, and after closing said hearing, to adopt Resolution 2025 dash oh-one dash oh-one, to accept the highest bid, dispose of the property identified as tax parcel 1499-dash-94-dash-1236 to the highest bidder, and to designate the interim county administrator to convey the property by his signatures, signature on all closing documents, including the deed.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Are there any questions for Mr. Evans from the board? Has anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
No, sir. In case resolution two-zero-two-five-zero-dash-one-zero-one, board, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion to adopt the attached resolution number 2025 dash zero-one dash zero-one as presented.
I'll second that motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton, for the motion. Second, Mr. Dudley, to adopt the resolution as presented. Is there any further discussion? Not hearing any.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order. Did we actually open a public hearing?
I ask if anyone will sign up to speak.
Okay.
If they were signed up to speak, I was going to open the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. There, there wasn't anyone to speak, was it?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Thank you. Motion passes seven-zero. All right, now it's time for item number eleven, unfinished business. Any unfinished business, Mr. Evans?
No, Mr. Chairman.
New business, twelve A, BZA appointment recommendation from the Board of Supervisors, who is- Who is speaking on that? Mr. Evans, thank you.
I'll take this. Mr. Chairman, Herschel Stone has been a member of the county's Board of Zoning Appeals for the last five years, and his term expired on January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. He is eligible for reappointment and desires to be reappointed. As you are aware, BZA appointments and are, sorry, are at-large appointments, and per the Virginia Code, the county's Circuit Court Judge, as the BZA is a legally quasi-judicial board, makes all BZA appointments. However, in the past, Judge Moreau has graciously, graciously allowed the board to make non-binding recommendations for BZA appointments. Three individuals have expressed their interest in serving on the BZA and have submitted interest forms to the county. With one seat that is currently available, those three individuals are Herschel Stone, as mentioned, currently serving on the BZA, Nancy Eames, and Richard Compton. Historically, the board has made a recommendation of those interest forms identifying an individual for the court to act upon. As mentioned, the court need not take the board's recommendation, but is always willing to hear the recommendation from the board. The recommendation is that the board make a recommendation of some sort. If, if I may go off script just a little bit, Mr. Chairman, there is probably a better need to standardize the process by which we make these recommendations, both in timing and in nature, to prevent the need for last-minute scurrying to get information to the Circuit Court, as well as to make sure that there are options that are reasonable for the board to recommend to the court.
Okay, thank you so much, sir. Mr. Evans, hang on one second. Questions from the board, Mr. Dudley, please, gentlemen, please, I'm, I'm swiveling here. Just say, Mr. Chairman, that way I can hear who it is and we'll recognize you, okay? Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Evans, Herschel Stone, is he currently?
Yes, he's currently on the BZA, and he's currently, he's recently been elected as chair.
That's where I was heading to. He was recently elected as chair.
Yes, Mr. Dudley.
And I can't see taking him off of, if they had the confidence on the board to say, hey, we'd like for you to be chairman. That, that's the question I had. Are we putting one or two on?
There is currently one seat that does not have an appointment that's already been made.
Okay.
The court has this year already made three appointments. I will clarify that, given the interest forms that we received by the end of the year and the notifications we received regarding additional interest forms, we, even though we submitted forms to the court, we requested the court delay to allow us to be able to make recommendations. The court did not delay in appointing at least one of those seats, and so there's only one remaining, and that is Mr. Stones.
Okay. Mr. Bowman, hang on one second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, so I'm going to ask the chairman and the board members to consider the appointment that Mr. Evans just mentioned, because we are, you know, the body that recommends to the court. We do not have the authority to appoint the BZA, but we can recommend. As a timeline, Ronald Merrick's was sitting on the BZA, is that correct?
He was on there. One of those that expired in January twenty twenty-five.
And so his expired, and the staff took over the applications to the court without bringing them to us for review, just like we're doing right now for the three that we have for the open vacancy. Unbeknownst to us, one of those applications was sent over there, and the court issued an order appointing Odie Shelton to that seat. And I'm going to ask that Odie Shelton's, and we request the judge to rescind that order and allow us to recommend two people to the BZA. And that's, that's where I met with that. It was not, it should have been brought to us, it should have been brought to us to vet and to send over to the judge for her review and approval. So because that was out of order, then I would recommend that we ask her to rescind that order that she issued, so we now can make two appointments.
Mr. Chairman, if I may clarify.
Mr. Evans, just, just a quick, Mr. Bowman, you know, I, I have to interject a point of order, because the judge has the sovereign right to make the appointment, and, and, you know, in all fairness to you, I feel your pain, however, that is not germane to the issue that we're talking about right now. We have to make this recommendation to the board, to, to the judge at this juncture. Mr. Evans, please.
I just, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to clarify that in the defense of the actions that were taken, there was a communication with the court that, that clearly, it, it is a difficult process, because we are supposed to communicate the interests to the court. It's, the timeline is such that the expiration of, of the terms would have ended prior to this meeting. And so there was communication with the court, requesting them to not take the action that was taken. But as, as Mr. Tucker expressed, the court has the discretion to, to take those actions and, and chose to do so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Excuse me, just again, and, and I agree with what the chairman's saying, but Herschel Stone's term has already expired, but yet we're taking action on him tonight. So between the December meeting and the January meeting is when these appointments expired, and they could have, in my opinion, could have been held on to this meeting here and let us, as a board, recommend who we wanted for those two seats. And by the way, the one that's been appointed is there for five years. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's my point, and I'll just leave it right there.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Evans, a quick question. I'm coming to you, Mr. Ingram. How, how much time do we have before we make that recommendation to the, the actual judge?
So ideally, because the, the terms expire in January, ideally, that would be a recommendation that's made in November or December of the, at the latest of the year prior. There's, in review of the statute, there, there may be some other procedural issues with the appointment timelines that I may discuss with Judge Moreau generally, or the Circuit Court generally, but ideally, we should be soliciting interest forms well before that November-December timeline that allow the, this board to be able to make recommendations in the November or December business meeting, to allow us to communicate that prior to the holidays, which will then flow into a very short timeframe before the, the terms expire.
So if I understand you, and I think I do, time is of the essence, it's not our friend, is this what you're sharing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I have expressed to the court, because of the nature of the actions of the, the BZA, that a delay is probably not overly detrimental, because the terms technically expire after the January meeting. So there, there would, it may not always fall that way, but this year it did, and so our request for a delay from the court's perspective this year would have been less detrimental than normal.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ingram, I'm sorry.
You know, I'm not sure what the breakdown was, but needless to say, Mr. Stone has served on that board for five years, and he was recently elected to chairman, and the judge has full authority to accept or reject whatever we send over, and I would not like us to send any mixed messages on somebody she's already appointed. So I, I'd love to make the, the motion that we submit Mr. Stones to be appointed by the court and, and move on with it.
Who was that you recommended?
Herschel Stone. He made.
Yes, Herschel Stone.
And, and also to accept what she's already put in place by way of Odie Shelton.
Just quickly, Mr. Ingram, you can unwind what the judge did, let's just address your motion. Is there support for Mr. Ingram's motion?
I support Herschel Stone, second.
Moved and met with second, that we will recommend Herschel Stone for the judge to appoint to fill that seat. Gentlemen, is there any further discussion? If not, cast your vote. Thank you so much. Motion passes seven zero. At this time, we have, under new business, we have, I guess we'll call it item B, under twelve B, the funding for the deputy clerk position in the Circuit Court Clerk's Office. And the funds will come from the contingency fund to cover, I think it's four months of salary. Five, thank you. All right. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I'd make that motion, second.
Is moved and met with second, that this board would approve the funding for deputy clerk position in the clerk's office with funds from the board's contingency fund to cover the salary from February first to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification.
Mr. Bowman, yes, sir.
On the clerk's position, you're saying we're covering the funding through June thirtieth. What happens on the first of July? Does this become a permanent position with the clerk's office?
Just, is Ms. Harris here to, let me, since she's not here, I'll try to pinch hit as best I can. According to the Honorable Angie Harris, she shared with us during the work session that she has an individual that is retiring at the end of June, as I understand it, and her salary far outpaces what the entry of starting salary would be for this deputy clerk that would be hired at the tune of, I think it was forty thousand, six hundred and some odd dollars annually, plus the benefits, and there would be an overage. So her immediate needs were that we would try to bridge that gap and get her to the point wherein her current employee is going to resign and, or retire, rather. But, and I think in round numbers, and Ms. Venn had, you help me out, we kind of watered that down to somewhere in the neighborhood of a little over ten thousand dollars or...
Well, actually, with seventy-six and all, it's around twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three thousand with benefits, all right. But at any rate, the funds are going to come from our contingency fund, but I think that is the gist, and I ask anyone to help me out, my memory is now what it used to be. Mr. Evans? Thank you, sir.
If I may clarify just briefly, but I believe there is a, there's going to be, there's already a proposal in the budget that's been submitted to include things after the end of the fiscal year, so I think that's what, we're, we're trying to bridge the gap between now and then, is that, okay?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other discussion? Any questions from the board? All right, gentlemen, cast your vote. Thank you. The motion passes seven zero. Let's see, we had a motion to separate some items from the consent agenda, and so the public understands, and, and, and I want everyone to understand, you know, as long as I'm the chairman, we're not going to try to put things on the consent agenda that's just going to kind of fly into the radar. If they need to be transparent to the public, it is my intention to make it so. And that's why I made a motion to move or separate certain items from the consent agenda. And not all of it is bad or negative. Sometimes it's good news that the public needs to hear. So let's see, item C was, that motion to separate this was to have a Comcast bead application letter of support. Mr. Arnold, would you come forward, sir, and just share very briefly what this bead application and the benefits that the residents will get as a result?
Sure, I'd be glad to. Good evening, gentlemen. The, on tonight's agenda is a request for a letter of support from Comcast Communications for an upcoming application for grant funding. The program is named BEAT, and on, for the life of me, I can't think of what BEAT actually stands for. I think the B stands for broadband, but it's got a good amount of money at the federal level, and I believe it's like one point five billion allocated to just the Commonwealth of Virginia. And the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, as they do with other broadband grants, are going to be administering this. And so Comcast has asked for a letter of support from the board, because that helps in their application scoring process, when they have that letter in hand from the governing body. In the drawings and documentation Comcast has provided to us, this funding, if awarded, would help to provide fiber optic, high-speed internet service to approximately nineteen hundred homes, spanning approximately four hundred seventy miles, largely located in the southern portion of the county. So Mount Herman area, and areas along fifty-eight east and west, east and west of Danville. So that's the gist of what their request is in terms of this letter of support.
Okay, thank you so much. So in other words, a quick question, so the benefit to the community is the fact that they will actually have some options, is that correct?
It goes, right. It could be that there are, ultimately, it would promote options. It would potentially promote competition.
Okay.
As you all are already aware, the county has a partnership with River Street Networks. It's a countywide project to provide service to the unserved, but in spite of that, there are even additional locations that have been identified more recently with this BEAT mapping that are still designated as unserved. So this will help to expand Comcast footprint beyond the city of Danville and some of the areas that they already have a presence. And then you've already got River Street, those are two main providers right there. So Chairman Tucker, ultimately, I would say that the state determines who gets the BEAT funding, but it could ultimately expand Comcast, or, just as you all may recall from a couple of months ago, River Street asked for a BEAT letter of support as well. So all this is going to be in the hands of the state, you know, as far as who they want to award money to. And I don't think it's all or nothing, but again, it is allowing or potentially facilitating another provider to provide high-quality, high-speed internet to our residents.
Any, any questions for, yes, sir?
No, I, I was just going to say, I definitely support this, because in part, that is my district, and, you know, we've been down this road about not having the internet, and out that way, we have Zito, and I'm going to leave that one alone, and we have River Street coming, and even with River Street, there's certain streets that the main line goes right by that they're not going to extend the internet. And Comcast, same thing, that there's certain streets that they go right down, and then all they, all they have to do is cross the street and hook people up, and they just say they can't afford to do that, because it's about thirty-five thousand for, for one road in particular. So the way I look at it, the more providers we have, the more options, hopefully, it'd be a, a, a less of a cost to the citizens, and, you know, if all this fails, you still have Elon Musk and Starlink. So, you know, the, the more, the better.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ingram. Any further, yes, sir, Mr. De...
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Arnold, and for the public, it's, that BEAT stands for Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program, started in two thousand and twenty-four. It's a federal program, aims to close the digital divide by expanding broadband access and affordability. So that's it in a nutshell, that's what it is. That's what Comcast is asking for, as, for our support on that, so redundancy is always good. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, but not only that. But not only that, competition keeps prices down for the end consumer. Someone else? Board, any other discussion? Hearing none. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I'd make that motion. We write a letter of support.
I'll second that motion, sir.
Any further discussion? Thank you all for your motion and second. Gentlemen, cast your votes. Thank you. That motion passes seven zero. The next item I separated out under the consent agenda would be twelve D is the tipping fee waiver approval for Hurt Partners at Southern Virginia Multimodal Park. Is Mr. Adcock or Mr. Rowe still here?
Yes.
Hate to do this to you. Ms. Ragsdale, would you come up and kind of handle this one for us, please? Thank you. You're so resourceful.
I will handle it to the best of my ability. So Hurt Partners owns a property in Hurt, and this was once part of the Burlington Industries site. There is some cleanup that needs to be done on the site in order for it to be ready for another end user. There were some areas on the property where the previous company buried textiles and things of that nature. So all that needs to be properly disposed of in order to clean the property up. Hurt Partners has been cleaning the property up over the last few years. The board has waived the tipping fees, to my knowledge, a couple times at the landfill, allowing them to dispose of any of the waste that they remove from the site in our landfill at no cost to them. They have once again requested that the tipping fees be waived. So that is before the board, that request is before the board at this time.
Thank you so much. Ms. Ragsdale, very quickly, for the benefit of just being transparent, I have a couple of questions, and then I'll open it up to the board. First question is, these, these partners, have they been good neighbors?
I can only speak to the erosion and sediment control side of that. We currently have, we do bi-weekly inspections as part of our erosion and sediment control program. The site is currently not in compliance.
And can you tell us why they're not in compliance?
As part of your erosion and sediment control, as part of your land disturbance department, we approve an erosion and sediment control plan that identifies measures that have to be put into place to trap sediment and prevent it from leaving the property. These measures have to be maintained. Silt fences have to be maintained. The ponds and traps and things like that have to be maintained so that they're not eroding and you're not seeing reeling on the site. And you have to maintain adequate temporary seeding and stabilization, and they are not currently doing these things. So we have, we currently have third-party inspectors that go to that site every two weeks, conduct inspections, and we submit those reports, and the reports, the last few reports have all shown the same issues, and they're not currently being addressed.
So now we know that they're not in compliant. These tipping fees, so the general public understands, we are actually foregoing revenue with this particular company. Is that right?
That is my understanding, yes.
That is correct.
And I don't know that you can be accurate to attach a dollar, and I apologize for having you here, but it is for transparency for the public, okay? So would you guesstimate that if we vote to approve, to waive these tipping fees, it withstands the reason that we're basically giving this entity over a hundred thousand dollars and/or helping them to basically prepare their property to make it more marketable? Would that be a fair assessment?
Yes. Having a clean site, would it make it more marketable?
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale. And for those aforementioned reasons, it's why I'm not going to support this. This is why I pulled it from the consent agenda. Gentlemen, discussion from the board. Questions for Ms. Ragsdale?
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just for the public's knowledge, we, in the past, have waived some fees. The last time, and I think Mr. Dalton can remember this, the last time we waived the fees in agreeance, if the property was sold and developed, that those fees would come back to us. Is that correct? We told them the last time, this is it, and this is it. So I am not in favor of waiving fees because there's, there's no moving forward, and we cannot continue. This is the taxpayer's money, and it's not fair for us to give it away like this. Hello, can I get an amen?
Is that in the form of a motion, Mr. Dudley?
If there's no other discussion, that is my form of motion, that we do not waive the tipping fees for Hurt Partners, for the Southern Virginia Multimodal Park, SVMP.
I'll second it.
Boy, that was unanimous. Mr. Dudley made the motion. Was it Mr. Bowman that seconded?
It is. He thirded it, and he fourthed it.
I don't even know if we need to vote on it. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Time to vote, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
So just for clarity, if you, a yes vote is going to be that you are agreeing with Mr. Dudley to deny this request. I haven't recorded it. You're good. Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Whittle. Mr. Whittle, are you saying you want to cast a yes vote? Thank you.
The green appears.
Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. That's why it's important that we, you know, just take a look at even what's on consent agenda to make sure. One of the things that I've promised it is that we will be transparent as a board as long as I'm chairman, and, you know, we have to be good stewards of the county's money. The next item that we, that I moved to separate was, we'll call it twelve E, which is the enterprise lease payoff. Ms. Vandeheid, would you come and share with the public for their benefit how much money you saved them by this stroke of mastery?
We decided to review our leases that we had. We had a large lease that we entered into for our sheriff's patrol cars. There were some marked, unmarked cars as well, as well as marked ones. And in our review, we found that it would benefit us if we could go ahead and pay off that lease as opposed to going through the five years of paying, making lease payments. So we found out that the payoff was just over a million dollars that we think we'll be able to cover with our current budgeted funds for the sheriff in jail. If not, we'll be coming back to you all after June thirtieth, once all the dust settles and everything, to make that right. But in doing so, it will save us a quarter of a million dollars over that five-year period.
Awesome sauce. Any discussion, questions for Ms. Vandeheid?
No, sir.
Yes, sir.
One question. Kim, you worked with a sheriff on a rotational basis for a plan to move these cars around then, once this is done?
Yes, that's what our plan is, and we won't have to get into this lease situation again. We're planning on rotating maybe every three years or so and making sure we have enough budgeted that that money would roll over for three years so that we wouldn't be in a bind when doing that.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bowman, any other questions for Ms. Vandeheid? If not, thank you so much, Ms. Vandeheid, and we really appreciate you taking care of us financially. Bowman?
No, I'm fine. If you're ready, I'd like to make the motion.
That's, that's why I called on you, sir.
Okay. Oh, thank you. All right. So I'd like to make the motion to approve the payoff of the enterprise fleet management lease.
Second it.
Uba, Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Ingram. To approve twelve, what did we say that was, twelve E? Is that right?
That's twelve E. That's correct.
Twelve E, yes. To pay these vehicles off, save the county a quarter million dollars or better. And I just, I just wanted the public to know that we're working hard for you, and tonight, that was what, three hundred fifty thousand dollars we saved? Motion carried. Thank you so very much. All righty. And thank you for allowing us to move those from a consent agenda, and sometimes it's good that the public gets a little bit of clarity there. All right. Any matters from the work session?
None that have not already been addressed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. All right, we're down to item fourteen, board members' report. I go to my vice chair, Mr. Height.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, staff for all their work. I'd like to thank my fellow board members for putting your trust in me to vote me in as your vice chairman for this coming year. Look forward to continuing to work together to move our county forward. That's all I've got tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see, I'm going to start the year off right, just like I ended it. I need about three minutes, and I'm just kidding. So I want to welcome Attorney Brent Shelton as the newest member of the Planning Commission, representing the Chatham Blairs district. He will have a proper introduction in next month's board meeting. I plan on having him here. And having said that, I want to thank Richard Waters for his pay of service on the Planning Commission, and would also like to recognize him at the next meeting. So I encourage citizens to go to the county's website and apply if you're interested in serving on any of our boards and commissions. Great opportunities to get involved, and, Mr. Evans, thank you. I think what you brought up tonight, we need to tighten up on how we move these board bank applications forward and get them in front of the board members so we can look at them. You've already heard from the Beautification Committee, also attended the grand opening of Tractor Supply and Blairs on January the fourth. It was a great event sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. I encourage everybody, if you haven't been there, this is one of the nicest, well-organized stores I have seen lately. It's out there right beside the Bojangles', and where Unique Industries is located. Also attended the Airport Commission meeting in Danville. Construction's ongoing for the new hangars there, so if you haven't been out there, take a look. They're, they're proposing a couple of brand-new hangars at that location. Attended the Farm Bureau monthly meeting, met with a number of farmers. I want to say there was probably anywhere from fifteen to twenty there. I didn't take a head count, but the first thing I wanted to talk about was land use and data center project. So I got to speak for about thirty minutes there. I didn't know I was going to, but that's what it cost me to eat that fine meal they had. They had a great meal, and you can expect that from the farmers. As the chairman of Legislative Committee, I was honored to speak for the Senate Committee on Local Government at the Virginia General Assembly on January thirteenth, at the request of Chairman Tucker and Senator Tammy Mokai. Let's see. I have, okay, I've met with the landowners and the adjacent property owners for the Valco project. I've taken windshield rides with, with the landowner, looking at those properties there that are subject to the rezoning, if in fact that happens. Also, met with the folks that are against this project and went on a windshield tour with those folks there, and they expressed their concerns, which everything is valid. So I just want to let you know that if you haven't been out there to meet with those folks, please take your time and go out there, and it's about an hour and a half of your time. I think it will enlighten you a lot. I've been asked by the Virginia Association of Counties to serve on three of their committees, agriculture and rural affairs, community, economic and workforce development, and the general government. So to let you know, that's, there's a great honor there to be able to serve on those committees. You get to interact with folks throughout the Commonwealth, and you also get to share ideas and bring back what some of these localities are doing to help us when we make our decisions. Also, Mr. Tucker, Chairman Tucker now will be in Richmond's General Assembly this Thursday, and will be attending the Baco Government Day. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Dudley?
I don't know why they put me beside him or him beside me, because I... They're giving Mr. Whittle a break. I don't hold a light to what he does. I tell him all the time, and his wife as well. There's no way in this world that I can keep up with him, but just want to thank everybody. Happy New Year to everyone. Yesterday, we celebrated Martin Luther King Day. I learned a lot about the works that he did when I was in college, and one of the greatest, no doubt, speakers of modern times. And just that, and also, you know, watched the inauguration. Let's be praying for our leaders, not only nationally, but Richmond leaders and our local leaders too. Please, I ask for your prayers that we make the right decisions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Mr. Whittle?
Oh, thank you. Listen, just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Thank all the staff. Everybody helps us out, keeps us on our toes, and just appreciate everything everybody does. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whittle. Let me publicly acknowledge our past chairman, Mr. Dalton. Thank you for your leadership in twenty twenty-four and twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Appreciate that. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, all the staff, everything that you do. I know we've had a good meeting, been here for all, a long meeting, but it's been a very good meeting. I want to welcome the board, thank y'all for everybody working together, and everybody be safe on the way home. It's cold tonight, so be careful. Happy New Year, and we'll see you next month. Thank you.
Mr. Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to highlight Dr. Jones, Mark Jones' retirement. He was here earlier, and I thought he was going to stay, but Mark has served us well, and we're going to miss him when he's gone. Likewise, we witnessed a peaceful transfer of power yesterday, and that's what sets us apart from all the other countries across this world. We may not always agree with each other, but we can do so peacefully and with dignity. Yesterday, Danny Marshall, our delegate, has done so much for our region, celebrated another birthday, I don't know, eighty-five, ninety, I forget, but, but he's been around a long time. Some of you know, we had a water leak at Fifty-Eight West, and it was, it was not of our own doing, but I did want to thank and compliment Chris Adcock and our whole public works crew for going out Friday and then all day on Saturday, that cold rainy Saturday, to get that water line fixed. Very grateful for them doing such a great job as usual. Tonight, there was what was called an orange out at Tunstall High School for a young student named Kara Eastwood that has leukemia. And I've brought this up many times since I've been on the board, but cancer is not a discriminative person. It can happen to anybody, be it young or old. And so I'm still a life member of Danville Pittsburgh Cancer, so if you know anybody that suffers from cancer, please let us know that we can help. Likewise, yesterday was Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday, and he was, had such an impact then, and he still has such an impact now, and many of his words still ring true today. I did want to thank Dr. Joyce for coming and taking the place of Tiffany Frank's over at Avery. And I did want to take a minute to thank our past chairman for the past two years, Darrell Dalton, for good leadership, running good meetings, and, and you did a good job, and I know you need to rest. And I wanted to compliment Robert, our new chairman, on a great meeting, and Vice Chair, Mr. Height, and look forward to a great year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Well, I just want to echo the sentiments of all the board members. I won't take up your time with long dissertation. I want to thank the staff that does all the heavy lifting. Thank you to all department heads and all of the employees of Pennsylvania County. Thank the public for being here today, coming out, and those that are viewing online. It's been a good day, good meeting, and... It's been a good day, good meeting, and, you know, if I made mistakes, and I thank Mr. Evans for being a good parliamentarian, as we say in church, charge it to my head and not my heart. And with that, we say Happy New Year, looking for a great and productive year, and we need your support. Mr. Dudley has already admonished everyone to pray for your leaders. You know, Romans 13, Paul says, we're supposed to be the best citizens anyway as Christians. He says that we are supposed to pray for our leaders because it's the right thing to do. Okay? Mr. Shorter, please.
Mr. Chairman, thank you all for affording me the opportunity to be back around the table once again. I appreciate your support and confidence that you have in me, and it's a pleasure just to serve with you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Evans?
Mr. Chairman, it's a great first meeting for you as chairman, and we're excited for the future. Thank, good to be here.
Thank you so much. It's time to go home.